Justin? Okay. We'll call this meeting the Fayette County Board of Commissioners to order. Please join us in our pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good to see everyone here today. First thing on our agenda today is a, hold a public hearing on the, for a fee schedule ordinance, ordinance number 2021-08, for the fees collected by the APC office for building permits and such. So, with your permission, we'll declare this public hearing officially open. And Bill McDaniel is here to represent the APC. And let you start the discussion, Bill.
Okay, well, what the fee schedule is, is originally, well, calculated, the fees are located in multiple ordinances that the area plan commission is responsible for. Those are the zoning code, subdivision regulations, and also in the building code. Now, it's preferred, of course, also for administrative purposes, to have all of your fees in one location. Now, there's three basic options that you have in the state of Indiana as far as where you can have the fee. An area plan commission can have the fee. Those are your ordinances. Those could actually, they could be done as an actual fee schedule ordinance adopted by the jurisdiction that the offices in. And another one that's possible, but is never really recommended, is it can also go in rules of procedure. And it's the one place you don't want to do that because at least with, if it's in the ordinances, you make changes, or if it's in a new fee schedule ordinance adopted by the county, it's, it's going through a public process. It gets changed in the future, something needs to be added, something needs to be changed. It still has to go through a public hearing process. And so, we want to get them all in one location. The state of Indiana, we also need to, as passes, is to then amend the area, the zoning code, the subdivision regulations, to excise all fees out of those ordinances. The state of Indiana, the homeland security, they want the, they do not like having your fees in your, the local building code that you adopt. Now, the building code that you adopt has reference to every single building code that the state of Indiana adopts. It's all done just strictly by reference. So each, the code reference stays the same each time the state of Indiana changes them. So those are always going to be there the same. But one thing that have to happen also is the, the most recent model building code, but the city and the county will need to adopt them separately. And because these are actually the, and one of the reasons with the Fayette County, with the board of commissioners, with the fee schedule, is that, particularly on the building code, because the, as, the, the authority under the planning law does not include the building codes. That's something completely different. So, the, which is one of the reasons also with, with the Fayette County Board of Commissioners, is that what we do with those is to, you know, so as you adopt, so as you adopt the fees, and because the way it was written and set up is to that, the area plan commission, okay, is the body that can be appointed to enforce and then the fees with the building code. There's agreement, the way it was done in the actual ordinances were adopted with the city of Connersville, then agreeing, basically agreeing to that the building inspections would be done by the county office. Okay, and one big driving factor is that these fees have not been updated. The only ones been updated or changed have been for the sign regulations, but other than that, fees have not been updated since 1993, when the zoning code, the building code, and then the subdivision regulations were adopted. So, I, even at that time, when those were adopted, it didn't cover all the cost of services. And so, the point with what you have with your, with the various fees, whether it's any type of petition, whether it's a subdivision, whether there's a, someone's doing a rezone, someone's doing a variance, someone's building a new house, any of these, is the, you need to have, the idea is that the fees that you have should cover the actual cost of the service. And so, that's going to be the administrative time put in. Okay, the, so there's going to be the administrative time, there's the time in the field doing the inspections, there's time in the, doing the research on some of the different petitions. There's the time that I have to go within the field, take the photographs, and then put the documents, then put the, do the research for staff report. And those things can take anywhere from about, for a petition, anywhere from five hours to, in some cases, as, oh, a certain problem, which was, I mean, I've literally dozens and dozens of hours. So it doesn't, so you want your, to cover those costs because otherwise, if you don't cover the cost of what it's costing me and the area plan commission, or indeed any other office. So if you don't cover the cost for special services, really, basically, all the other taxpayers are subsidizing that service for people. And there's certain services that we have, the certain services the surveyors and the health department have, that they do for everybody. But when there's something special, there's something, something special and unique to something for that particular need, you really need to have, the, the cost of that service should be borne by the person who needs the service. And so, this is something that's been coming, coming for a while periodically. It's a, you know, it's been discussed with the area plan commission. And now, we finally have an area plan commission that has decided and determined that, yeah, we really do need to update the fees. And this is the appropriate place to do it, is with the county commissioners. So I don't know if the commissioners have any of the questions, you still have questions, on the fee schedule and the, the proposed ordinance right here? So I don't know if there's still some questions, but if there still are questions, it's, it's best that we, we may try to make sure we get it as close to right the first time around. I mean, we can fix things, but you, you three really need to be happy with what's in here. So if you have questions, anything that raises a concern, well, we need to step back and then, whatever we might need to do to alleviate any concerns you may have with this. There's any questions from the members of the commissioners?
Well, thank you for that explanation, Bill.
I hope it wasn't too roundabout.
And we did, we did meet in special session and made a few minor changes in the original draft, which is reflected in the ordinance. Other than that, personally, I, I had no other suggestions. Is there anyone else here today that wishes to speak on this matter? Dan, Mr. Parker?
I just have a question.
Sure.
Will this, how will this impact, or will it impact a business that wants to add a big wing to their business or come to town? Will this delay, will it, or will it have an impact at all?
Well, it, it should not delay any particular project. Because if someone has a, if it's going to be a significant project, costs such as these are always anticipated to both the, the planning, the scheduling, and then also the cost of going through the project. Because if someone's going to do a multimillion dollar project, about four or $5,000 a fee really is, it's kind of a drop in the bucket.
So this is no impact?
No, no, no. It, now, some people who are doing something on a open plate and trying to, by squeeze something through on a G-string budget, well, that could have an effect for them. But it's the, but it's, it's, but it's something we already have in place because the, the structure itself really is not being changed for any class one projects.
Thank you, Bill.
Does that answer your concerns?
I'm, I'm just looking to streamline and make it easier for a business that wanted to do an addition or remodel or something like that, so they can order an traction that requires a, a build out, so that we don't take more time. If we take the same amount of time we're taking today, then we're, there's no impact. If it's more money, that's, that's moot. I don't care about that.
Because the only thing we have that could potentially reduce the timeframe is that, we've spoken with the commissioners in the past, is the, and then on the Monday after Thanksgiving, I'm going to be on a line with Schneider for their permit software. So we've already had one, which is iWork. This one's going to be Schneider. And this one of the things will be built into, will be a part of the annual license fee, will be the permits, which is pretty typical. So conceivably streamline that, at least if nothing else, if someone applies to me. And these are the, some of the information I need from the, the vendors, is that, how do we then design the actual permit program so that, okay, I may not be handling the water, the utilities, the drainage, but we should be able to, then have them set up so they can at least do a concurrent application. And I think with, oh, Matt's not here. But I've also spoke with Matt, he said it would be helpful, but until someone comes in, they don't charge the fee. So depending upon how that gets designed with the software, that can actually streamline things more. I've spoken with Brad Coulter. So he likes the idea that they can conceivably, at the same time, then the same things will be submitted to Connersville Utilities at the same time. So if we can design that, so, it's not quite one-stop shopping, but it is taking care of everything at one time, so I don't have to say, well, now you got to go here, now you got to go there, now you got to go here. And we could conceivably set it up with, at the time that a request is made. It's possible to set it, it should be possible to set it up so that in the request for, say, a new address, which Mr. Mackey handles, can take care of that. And it should conceivably, also be able to set it up so that when someone online could also, say, with Jay, do the, you know, the drive cut permits, you know, the road cuts for a new project out in the county. So they can at least make the application that way. And should be able to do it with, say, the health department. He could conceivably do it with some of the, some of the requests that are made that we cooperate with the, try to cooperate with the city with things that they have authority. So, and things can actually, then, as we find any holes in that, we could then actually, you can always adjust on the fly, and that's what your, your consultant vendors are for. So, does that help, does that help you a little more, Dan?
Good.
Okay, is there anyone else in today's audience that would like to speak to this matter?
Oh, I think that it could also be beneficial because I can also then probably Adrian on the loop for various, various projects also. Because particularly the class one projects, I think would be beneficial for Adrian.
This isn't my mom's business.
Yeah, I was going to say, but I know a lot of things with you anyway, for example, is we have the, they got a foundation release for the, with P A's. So, since it's also, since it's also going to be a gas station, you should be at the very front end of the loop also with being able to then modify your, the emergency, the emergency plan by tagging someone else into, adding someone else into the system. So, yeah, so different, different departments can also be, benefit from it also. I spoke with Jeff in the, there in the assessor's office, that there should be, should be a way, and some of these are then set up to where, instead of me doing actually my monthly permits and taking them up, is then on the distribution list and when permits are actually released, should be able to then, there should be a way then automatically get those updates and then the fresh permits to the assessor's office, so they can stay on top of the assessments. Which will, which, which can also end up saving time from, you know, for example, could save a lot, a lot of time for Eric with what he's doing, what he's doing visiting properties.
Okay, our, our county attorney also represents the APC in the same capacity. Jeff, do you have any, any questions or concerns, being attorney for both boards on this matter? Anything to add to that?
I don't have any concerns, it's just a, probably a more appropriate way to have our fees lined up. It won't change, it won't, it won't essentially change anything from the way we're doing it now. It's just you'll, you'll reference a different portion of our ordinances in this county to find what the fee schedule is.
And if we adopt this today, then that officially removes the fee schedule from the zoning ordinance itself and makes it a completely separate.
We have to, we have to delete those items.
We're just adding our own, we're creating one today, and then the APC will get rid of theirs Thursday.
Yeah, well, yeah, we'll, we'll set it up, so we should be able to then have the public hearing next for the December meeting, we should be able to hold a hearing then for the December hearing. We'll update the area plan commission of this is what we're then going to do at this point. So it'll just be the, I said, as, just verifying I found all the locations and the ordinances that need to be deleted. And then also is, then just inserting the proper terms and languages for the building code for the city and then also the county. And in case of this, for the, those building codes, we would then have to make the recommendation, but as those are actually city ordinance and the county ordinance, and when those are prepared, the, you know, the commissioners and then also the city council will actually then need to hold a public hearing to adopt those new ordinances, the replacement ordinances.
Is it fair to say that once this is done, that that would make the, the process easier for everyone to understand and follow?
I think so, because it'd be helpful not to have the fees scattered all over the place. Because when the zoning code was set up, it was set up to where there, there are actually fee references in about a half dozen or more different places in the zoning code. And some of them are kind of obscure, an obscure location, so this, this will get all, everything on that one location. And this will also make it easier is if we find something we've overlooked, to actually make the amendment to, to the ordinance.
Okay. But thank you for explaining all that, Bill. Is there anyone else in today's audience that has any question or comment on, on this proposed ordinance? Okay, fellow commissioners, do you have any questions, comments? What's before you?
I don't.
I appreciate all your work in this.
You're very welcome, thank you. Thank you for thanking me. It, it's always, it's always nice to know that someone's thanking you for the work that you do, I appreciate that.
Okay. You can either, you can either take, take action on this today or not. Much pleasure.
I'm going to accept the ordinance 2021-08.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Dale, second by Tracy, to approve ordinance number 2021-8, an ordinance establishing a Fayette County area fee schedule for Fayette County, Indiana. Is there any further questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Three ayes, Jane. Okay, ordinance number 2021-08 now adopted, Bill.
And if I could ask one thing, Jane, once there's, these are signed and everything's good, then, if I can get two copies of these for my records? Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you, Bill. Okay. Having no other business for the public hearing, I'll take a motion to adjourn the public hearing.
We have to adjourn the public hearing?
I'll second that.
We have a motion by Dale, second by Tracy, to adjourn the public hearing. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
This public hearing is officially closed. And we will continue on with our regular business schedule on our agenda. Minutes, you had a chance to review the minutes from our November 2nd meeting?
We would accept the November 2nd meeting, the minutes.
Motion by Dale, second by Tracy, to accept, approve the November 2nd meeting, minutes for our regular meeting. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Three ayes, Jane. Okay, department reports. Sheriff Laufman or his representative?
Yes, sir.
Zach Jones.
All right, we just wanted to come over and ask permission to apply for the Fayette County Foundation grant. We're not sure the price that we're going to be asking for, but we're looking for some equipment with our accident reconstruction team that we have. Bobby Revly just went to the class and he's already worked five or six serious accidents, several that have been, involved death. And if we can get some, some better equipment for that, that's what we're, we're looking to get. If we can go with the foundation grant, hopefully that eases our, the cost that we're going to have to take out of our budget. Joe Leesa said we needed to come over and ask for permission, so that's why we're here. And we're looking to probably match, do a 20% match, but we have money out of our commissary account to, to do that.
Could you, not only for my benefit, but also those that will listen in on this meeting, could you explain what kind of equipment you actually need for accident reconstruction?
What we're looking to get, again, Bobby Revly, he went to the, the class, it's a pretty extensive class. It's, I think, a month long altogether. And what we're looking to get is what is called a workstation, which, he sets a device out and it takes accurate measurements, right now we're just using a tape measure. This is more of a, a laser measuring system, and it'll cut down the time we're on a scene. Hopefully by about a half hour, 45 minutes is what he's saying. It's, it's gonna, it's gonna get us off the scene a lot faster than us shutting State Road 1 down for two hours. Maybe we'll just have it shut down for an hour, something like that. And also, what we're going to try to get is a drone, so he can get some better pictures. When an accident does happen, we're just standing there, taking pictures of the car. If he can use a drone, fly it up above it, we'll get some pretty good pictures of, of the entire scene. And then we can also use the drone for other things.
Yeah, I have, I've seen where drones are being more and more used in accident reconstructions and investigations. It does give you a better view of things. Do you have any idea, well, how, how big is the grant or what?
We're looking, the workstation, he just got a quote on that. I think that was about $3,500. And then the drone, we're hoping to get for $1,1500. So we're looking at probably a total of $5,000 that we're going to apply for, I don't know if we'll get it. But with Joe Leesa's help, we're usually pretty good at getting grants. So hopefully we can, I would say no more than $5,000 though.
Any questions from you two?
I'm going to approve the one after the grant.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Dale, second by Tracy, to approve the sheriff's department's grant application. Now, this is with the,
Fayette County Foundation.
Foundation, the Fayette County Foundation for Accident Reconstruction Equipment. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Three ayes, Jane.
Thanks, guys.
Good luck. Maintenance Department, Bill Gray.
Hello, everybody.
Bill, welcome back.
Thank you, good to be back. I got a, okay. I'll get with you in just a second. First thing I've got, here's I've got a quote, you all got a copy of my quote, to replace a pump on a cooling system. Now, this is something that, this is on the air conditioning, of course, you don't need it right now, but we need to, we need to move on this because by summer, you've got to have it. We're running on one pump. And if that one pump goes, you have no cooling whatsoever in jail at all. And these pumps are, are old, they were put in when the Joe would build, of course, almost 30 years ago. They can't be, they got to be replaced. You can't get parts for them, you can't get bearings for them, you can't rebuild them. And when they replace the, the motor, you've got to replace all the housing and pump, everything. And I've got four of them sitting there in this light. So, this is the one that's went bad. And I got a quote here from North Mechanicals for $11,741 to replace that pump. Now, this is something that you can, if you want to wait on for a while, it'll be okay, because like I said, you don't need it right now. We've got one pump, but before we get into summer, we've got to replace this pump. Because of, because you've got two pumps. One, one, excuse me, one of them were under building, but if you lose them both, you have no cooling whatsoever.
Hi, I've been down there with you and looked at this, and it's, and we have, I can't recall of the two, are, are both of them of the same age?
Yes, all four of them, there's four of them. There's two cooling pumps and two heating pumps.
All right. So going forward, I mean, the other is going to be just as obsolete as the one that's not working?
They all are. You're, you can't, you can't get parts for them. They don't make them.
Okay, so eventually, all four of them will have to be replaced?
Eventually, you have to replace all four. And it's not just the pump that they're having to replace, the housing, the way it goes into the system, I'd have to show you, I'd have to actually, well, you know, you've seen about it, I'd have to actually show you how it goes into the system and circulates the cold water for the cooling and the hot water for the heating. But it's the same one, it's the same.
Do you normally get more than one quote?
Yeah, I can, I can get another quote, I got to find another company. This was North Mechanical. We, we've had Johnson Controls, we've used Johnson Controls. I've been off for five months. I came back, and I found that Johnson Controls had done nothing with the building as far as getting summer equipment down and winter equipment up, which they should have done in July and August, and nothing has been done. So I request that we cancel the contract immediately with Johnson Controls. They just, they, they called me and they want to come down and, and service the equipment now. This is not the time to service that equipment, you can't put water in that equipment in November. So it's, it's not the time, so I wouldn't let them do it. I would ask your permission to get a letter out to cancel that contract.
Was your desire to have North Mechanical be contracted then for the maintenance and?
Eventually, yes, yes.
Okay, first things first here. Do you want to accept this quote from North Mechanical for the pump and all the, the equipment that goes with it? Or do you want to ask him for, see if we can get another quote on this?
Because I'd have to find another company, I actually deal with that.
I don't know who they are.
Johnson and North are two big ones, so I'd have to go check out and see if I can find them. I'm sure there's another company out there. Whether you can trust them or not, I don't know. I, I've dealt with North for years, I've dealt with Johnson Controls for years and years, and, and had real good luck with them, up until the last two years. And it's just the bottom saw out of it.
Yeah.
So if you want to hold off on it and let me get another quote, I can try to do that.
I'm going to hold off and see if I can get another one.
Okay, and I'll Okay, and I'll do that, by the next weekend, hopefully have one. But we don't want to wait a long time, you know, we want to get it done.
Okay, well we have a motion and a second to request a second quote on the pump equipment for the jail. All in favor signify by saying aye. Three ayes on that, Jane. On the matter of the, we currently do have a contract with Johnson Controls, which they have breached. And I don't, in quite some time, I don't think we really had any intention of continuing to use them. Because, just simply because of prior incidents. Normally their contract would have ended, would have continued until the end of the year. But we, since they, they did fail to perform their duties as prescribed in their contract agreement all through the summer. I tend to agree with Bill. We don't, we don't owe them any more money and then they should have lost money. We have probably paid them for work that they didn't-
Exactly.
Perform.
Didn't we vote early in the year to cancel the contract with them?
We were going to cancel the contract once it was up. But they still would have had to service the equipment the whole summer. And they, and like I said, I've been off five months, I've been off the whole summer, I've got pictures. They know they didn't do it, and I've got pictures to prove they didn't do it, so. And we're just lucky that the cottonwood wasn't as bad this year, if it had have been, our systems would have went down.
And all those condensers on the roof and everything, it has to be cleaned.
Yeah, they're clogged solid.
They clogged up, they didn't come clean that stuff out or nothing, and I wasn't aware of it.
Well, nobody was, until I got back and went up and took pictures of it, seen it, took pictures of it. I thought, I didn't know that they wasn't here. I didn't know that Jeff hadn't let them in, but then when I talked to Jeff and he, I realized that somebody's got to let them in, he didn't let them in. And I, and then he tells me, he says, "Well, we tried to call you." I told him that's a lie, my phone was never off. And I can go back through the history of my phone the whole time I was in the hospital, you never tried to contact me, so.
Well, what are they going to say, you know?
Well, they know they didn't do it.
Yeah.
They, I mean, when they tried to tell me in November that they was going to do it, they knew right then it wasn't done, so. And I'm not going to let them do it in November. And he says, "Well, it won't hurt in November, if I got a warm day." No, you're not cleaning those coils in November. I know what it'll do, that water will lay in it. Once it freezes, you bust your compressors and everything, it's not going to happen. I'd rather them be dirty, don't need them right now. We'll clean them before, before summer, they'll be clean.
Yeah, about next April or so.
Yeah, when it starts warming up, then we'll clean them.
So to cancel this, does this need a letter from Jeff or how do we need to go about doing that?
We just need to send out a simple letter saying, due to the default of the contract, please find this as our immediate decision of this contract. I mean, it doesn't have to be fancy.
I'm going to send them a letter to cancel the contract.
Yeah, I second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Dale, second by Tracy to cancel the maintenance contract with Johnson Controls. Any further question? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Three ayes, Jane. I'll take care of that, Bill.
Take care of it.
Yeah, do you have anything else?
Yes, I do. A gentleman from Duke Energy has come out and done a survey on the lights, and he wants to, he wants to talk to you about that.
Okay.
Met with Bill, had one more on me. Two proposals for you. Met with Bill last week. We identified that you, this building in particular, qualified for the Duke Small Business Energy Saver Program. The program offers a rebate to help upgrade, specifically your lighting, to LED lights. Visiting and talking to Bill, it sounded like many of your other buildings have already been upgraded. And the two proposals that I have in front of you are for me counting the lights with them, identifying, you know, what we can, what we can do for you. The proposals are both pretty much the same as far as what's available to you. The rebate's upfront. It is a rebate that you don't, you know, pay for the full price of a project and then wait for the rebate down the road. We actually take it off the top of the total price, so you are only responsible for the remainder of pricing. It's also upfront in the sense of, we do the work and installation of everything, and then you are invoiced. So there's no deposits, no money upfront, nothing like that. The two proposals I have in front of you, the first one is, it's a lot more expensive than the second one, but it is pretty much new fixtures. Your rebate comes from how much energy you're, you're using and how much it calculates that will save you. So in particular, this room would get new fixtures instead of just a relamp. So, and then there's some other areas that we can discuss about what's included in the program. But I always like to give customers options, so proposal number two is strictly a relamp. And that is pretty much covering all fluorescent bulbs in the building with that. So there are some things that my program does not work with, like the big hanging pendant fixtures in the hallways. We look at the top of them, they're very intricate with some, some particular bulbs that we just don't carry. So there's some things that we just don't do on the program. But this is, you know, effectively hitting the rest of the lights in the building. The exterior fixtures are also something that are pretty tough for us to do. Our rebate gets applied towards the labor and material, or every other rebate program in the country pretty much gives you a rebate towards the product. You're responsible for the labor and trying to figure out how to get it installed, we actually do the work for you. And that way it's very turnkey. So we order the material, we get it delivered, we order the bill on a schedule that works best for installation, et cetera. So the first proposal, you know, you're out of pocket would be, you know, because you have quite a bit of lights here. You're out of pocket is the $85,000. It's about a seven-year payback and shows a return of about $14,000, or 14% a year. So it's about a seven-year payback to get new fixtures. And then also, we do have, you know, 0% on payment plan and stuff like that. So there's a pricing schedule there as well, that can go over, over that. The relamping option, the second proposal, is quite a bit less expensive. You're looking at an overall project cost of $55,000. You're getting a rebate of 44%, which is $23,976. Your cost is about $31,000. And you're looking at about 31-month payback on that, it's a pretty fast payback on the power even, so. The less expensive project does exclude some things, the first project doesn't like these can lights. There are LED lights available for them, they're just not on the program. So that, the less expensive project is pretty much every fluorescent bulb you see, or four foot like this, will get an LED bulb. We do remove the ballast as well. That's probably the biggest deterrent for maintenance right now in every building in America is the ballasts. They are usually what goes bad and usually what creates the fixture to fail. The bulbs are pretty easy to swap in and out. So our program runs a ballast-free bulb, so we get rid of that unit and we put in, we wire the sockets to the bulb. Put in that LED bulb in there.
You can't do all of them that way though because you've got emergency lights.
What's that?
I say you can't do them all that way because you've got emergency ballast.
Correct, correct, a significant portion of your costs is, in either project, you have about 100, 110 emergency ballasts or battery backups. They're, they have a little red dot and they are designed obviously to keep light going if the power shuts down. That is something we cannot get rid of, and obviously for code and safety, we have to keep those intact. So there's, you know, a significant portion of either project is in that emergency ballast replacement. We do have to put in a new ballast for that, as you would if you replaced it at any LED bulb, so. You have a considerable amount of lights in the hallways, kind of underneath the soffits. And, you know, we've been here for two hours counting all the rooms and all the lights and everything, so. But this is, you know, the program's unique with the whole covering, you know, the labor's involved, it's a turnkey solution, so. Rebates are good when you sign up, so the process is very simple where you would sign up for the project, we would lock in your rebate, and then we would move forward with ordering the material, working with Bill, and to figure out when we can install, and items like that.
Is the amount of rebate the same on both?
No, it's similar because the rebate is associated with how much energy I'm going to save you. I believe on the more expensive project, it's $24,000. And then on the least expensive and lesser expensive project, it's $23,000, it's about a $700 difference, looks like. The rebates associated with essentially, your fixture is now using this much energy. The fixture I'm going to put in uses this much energy, your rebate is the difference. It's driven by how much energy I'm saving you per fixture. So the more expensive project is merely a more expensive fixture. So instead of just relamping it, kind of, you know, just updating the existing fixture how it is, you know, the cover stays the same, you're just going to more efficient bulbs. With the more expensive project, I'm taking that cover off, all the bulbs are coming off, and you're getting a more, it's more attractive fixture, and there's no more bulbs or ballasts in that new fixture. So you're eliminating some of the technology there as well. And the life expectancy on those is pretty tremendous, I mean, you're talking 20, 25 years of running on those without replacing on the, on the new fixture, so. But I always like to look at payback and make sure you're getting the best situation for your facility. Either project, it's a one-year labor and product warranty, so any bulb that goes out the first year, we would physically come out and take care of it. After the first year, you would get the product for free over the five years. So let's say a year or four rolls by, and you've got, you know, 50 bulbs out for some reason, or 20 bulbs out. Bill would actually get the bulb and you just have to pop it in, or fixture, depending on which one you'd go with, so.
There's a lot of material here to absorb.
There is.
Evidently you have, you've been through the building and you have counted all the light fixtures.
Correct, correct, we entered every room and made sure we got in, you know, timely manner into the courtroom and stuff like that. There, there are some, some spaces that, you know, I've put in, you know, no retrofit or I can't do them for some reason, you know. I believe it's in the, there was one courtroom, there was one section, they were on a ledge that I don't know how we would get to it safely, so there was some fixture there we just can't do. In addition, the big large pendants in the middle of the hallways, stuff like that. But I believe we got to about 95%, 90% of the building as far as what we could do. And I've put some additional buffer in there just in case as well. When you're counting three, four hundred fixtures, I want to make sure there's enough in there for your, enough bulbs and everything for the project. You would only get charged for what we use though. So, you know, I counted this many, I added a little bit of extra just in case, a little buffer line. But if for some reason, you know, we come in here and we don't install 20 fixtures, then you will be charged for this. You only pay for what we put in.
Does your count include all the lights on the outside of the building?
The exterior's not on there at all, those are decorative streetlights. Now, I saw from across the street some solutions. They took off the top of the pole and they direct mounted a fixture, I don't know what building that was or, we'll get up on that. So, but with our program, it's pretty much replace what you see that's there, any type of workaround or any type of additional mounting, stuff like that, usually that, you know, makes the labor costs skyrocket. We're very, you know, cut and dry, replace what you see program, so it doesn't, there wasn't much on the outside that we could help with. I did see some fixtures that had already been retrofitted with corn cups, LED lights in the parking lot.
That's the big ones up in the parking lot.
Yeah, yeah, the parking lot looked like it has already been upgraded, so. So this is strictly interior. And other than that, I mean, that's pretty, pretty much the gist of what this program entails.
Okay, so this, this is a sizable expense and if it, you know, if it worked the way it's supposed to, it would result in long-term savings for sure. What would this, what would a conversion like this cost us if we did it without your assistance?
It would probably, so I always tell customers, you could probably do this project less expensive for the total cost. The, you know, the one is $110,000 total for the expensive one and the less expensive one's $55,000. You could probably do it for less than that. But to do it without the rebate, like, it would definitely cost you more than what you would be paying with the, or, you know, with our contribution. So, you know, I would estimate in the high 40s on the less expensive project. So it's just, you know, with the way Duke runs things and everything, you know, it is probably going to be a little bit more labor than what you would pay here. But, but the $24,000 that's being applied to, that's a considerable amount.
Okay, so the utility incentive is, is your, is Duke's, actually, that's-
That's actual Duke money.
That's actual Duke's contribution.
And that's why it's upfront, is because, you know, that money's been used there.
Bill, have you had an opportunity to see, view all this yet?
Yeah, and I'm not real happy with not being able to press the, all, the big I told you that, and also the outside light, that's my, you know, that's where I have my problem. So I'm not real happy about not being able to do anything. And also the license and circuit cord.
Right, yeah.
There are four foot fluorescent and there's stuff, sure, above.
Yeah. The hallway lights, the good news is they're already efficient.
Yeah.
Not that that makes it any better, but yeah, I wish there was something, I know there's nothing we can do with those.
Yeah, and that's-
I could have somebody come out and take a look at the-
Yeah, because like I, I told you guys, having trouble getting balls for me, I've got several out right now, I've got balls ordered.
Sure, sure.
It's just, it's one of my problems.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, programs, the- Yeah, programs, the, in order for us to get a certain light bulb put on the program, it can go through a very heavy vetting process because, as you guys can imagine, you can order anything on Amazon. I mean, you can find almost anything you want. It's just Duke won't put anything on the program that hasn't passed its efficacy. Fail rates and stuff like that, they don't want to put anything on there because then customers won't be happy. Everything that we have, that we use is gone through rigorous testing and only from manufacturers that we trust. So it's hard when we find something, you know, in particular like a church sanctuary, we, we always walk away from those because it is a very special room for that building and we often don't have a solution for it. So I want to be as comprehensive as possible with every project. It's sometimes it's tough when there's any decorative things or, you know, some things that we just don't carry or use. Business is still touching, I believe it's four hundred fixtures, whether they're little as it is or four footers. It's touching several hundred, you know, fixtures in your building there, so. And the money you save from it could help you maybe possibly take care of some more of the social things as well, so, you know.
That's just mine, I'll just run that on.
Do you have any idea how much money, how much savings is in this? Like, you know, you have your estimated hours used. Do you have, do you have any kind of way of knowing how much of the savings that applies to?
So as far as, yeah, on the first page, it'll, it kind of escalates to ten annual savings. So either actually, both projects are about the same. So we're looking around twelve thousand dollars a year in energy savings.
I see that now, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay, it's okay. I see, I look at this every day, so I always make sure I'm looking at it with new eyes when I can because it's. But, and then that's kind of the trick with both projects is you're looking at about the same savings. You're looking at about the same rebate, you know. It's just a matter of, do you want to put in something that replaces the bulb and gets you away from the ballasts? Or do you put something up that kind of gets you away from both bulbs and ballasts? And it'll look a little, you know, a little more newer, but, you know. I think with all your fixtures here, they have a purpose as far as the, you know, lenses you already have, so.
And also you can't do anything with the can lines either.
Well, I can, that's on the more expensive project though. So the can lights, I can't.
You told me at the start you couldn't.
I, yeah, so I looked at the, looked at what we have to offer. We do have an LED can that will go in there. There does not need. I'm not sure.
You have to replace the whole can.
Yes, correct. Everybody rewired.
Yeah, I mean, you're talking hundreds.
Yeah.
Because they're everywhere.
Well, that's why the first project is so expensive, that there's, you know, there's a lot of these little guys. I mean, again, good news is they're CFLs, they're pretty efficient. You know, your, I'd say your main energy wasters are the fluorescent bulbs throughout the building. That's why I put together.
Well, I wouldn't, I wouldn't suggest replacing the can.
Yeah, I mean, if we had a, you know, a nice LED fixture that went in there, but I think the ones we have for those are about a hundred dollars each. That's just not, yeah, yeah. Yeah, I always recommend the one that gives you the fastest payback. So, you know, with a less expensive project, going with all the fluorescent bulbs in here. Get a lot of ballasts we would be using for that one, so.
How long is this proposal good for? And I, I assume your program is ongoing.
Correct, it is. The re, the pricing is technically only good until you sign up because rebates fluctuate. So yes, program's been around for eight years, nine years. I've worked at it from the beginning. And so rebate is obviously, you know, but it does change often. I do have additional money every month from our budget that I apply to certain projects. So I have applied a little bit from our November budget to this. But I always want to keep it very fluid with whoever, whatever customer I'm talking to in the decision-making process. So it's one of those things depending on timeframe, you know.
We have to watch our budgets too.
Exactly.
That's the reason when you see the total cost of this project, my first thought in my head is, you know, how would, you know, how and where do we pay for this?
Sure.
And, you know, unexpectedly. So, but if we took time to study this and more in depth, that.
Absolutely, it doesn't have to be decided today. I mean, it's, you know, I just want to make sure you had all your information in front of you. If, if you're looking at the less expensive project where it says your cost is thirty-one thousand one nineteen, there is a ten percent discount for lump sum payment. So if you were going to pay it all at one point, I believe your price drops to twenty-seven thousand six ninety-five. So there is a lump sum option. We do also offer twelve-month and twenty-four-month zero percent. And that's directly through, you know, through us, so.
Okay.
The twenty-four-month option, actually, you're going to save almost all of that from energy savings. So if you spread out the payments, the energy you're saving each month is going to help pay for that as well, so.
Now, the, the lump sums discount was how much, you say?
Ten percent.
Ten percent.
I'm sorry, it's eleven percent. It fluctuates from ten to eleven percent, sometimes it's a decimal point and I was looking at it just now. So it's about a thirty-four hundred dollar discount.
And the same thing would be true on, on both plans?
Correct, correct. It's a lot more significant on the larger project. It's about triple that because it's such a more, it's a more expensive project. And that pricing breakdown is on page three on either one.
Well, what do you, do you say you want to take some time and study this or you?
I think it's a great idea to look forward to doing it, just looking at the timing for us and how it works into the budget, what you said.
Yeah, well, certainly something worth looking at for sure. But it's with as much material as there is here to consider, I wouldn't feel comfortable making a snap decision on this, you know.
I don't blame you, I don't blame you, I wouldn't either. A lot of the paperwork is the scope of, you know, all the line items. So that's just all the rooms that we counted. So that is the majority of it. And, you know, any questions that come up on, on bulbs available, answer.
Okay, is your. Is, is this your contact information on the front page?
It is.
Okay, so you're Angelo?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay, you want to take this under advisement? Further study and?
I would take it under advisement.
Okay.
Yeah, it's not seconded.
Motion by Dale Second by Tracy to take the Duke Energy, Energy Saver Program Proposal under advisement. All of them in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Three ayes. We'll, we'll do that. Angelo, and, and we'll, we'll take a hard look at this and, of course, we'll want to discuss it with our own maintenance man, Bill Gray, who, you know, and, and see what we can and can't do and what we should and shouldn't do.
Makes sense to me.
But thank you for all this work you put in on those.
Yeah, absolutely, thanks for your time and, um, thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Have you done any of this work for any body locally or?
Um, I can probably, I'm trying to think off the top of my head. I'm the sales manager for the Legion, so Ohio, Kentucky, Indiana. And actually, this program doesn't exist in Ohio as of right now. Because I don't know how much you've heard about House Bill Six and a lot of the controversy that happened in Columbus. There's a lot of problems in Ohio, so the program got shut down in Ohio. So we're in Kentucky and Indiana now. But I, but I can find out what projects we've sold here. I am also proposing this to the school district here. I'm working with, with their maintenance group, putting together a couple of their elementarys, pricing for them, so.
Yeah, now, we do, we do own other buildings in the neighborhood here. Would they also qualify for this?
Most of them's already been done, Dale. Many of those buildings been done, the jail's been done, we're releasing them down. Those are, those are already been done.
All right.
They would qualify though, but yeah. I mean, as far as I know, it's part of the biggest energy user, this building, so, yeah.
At the time, they couldn't do this building. At the time, those buildings were done, they couldn't, they couldn't do it. It wasn't big enough, it's like.
It was stupid, it was stupid, right?
Now everything, it wasn't big enough. It wouldn't save us enough money, now they're saying it's big enough, so I don't know. Wyatt wasn't big enough when they done those, now it is.
But we didn't do the other ones though, right? Somebody else.
Duke, you did them.
Okay, yeah, I'm not sure. This one probably didn't qualify at the time.
Maybe that's what.
Yeah, I think we have a, we have a, a usage limit. It's one eighty, one eighty KW, and so this is right under it. I think, I think you're like a one sixty-seven, one sixty-eight. So, and the way Duke set that up is, you know, we can't go into a war. Let's say it's, it's a small business program. And there's this little gray line where buildings qualify and they don't, so. But this one does at this point, so. You know, if they're together, it qualifies, so.
Okay. Well, thank you very much.
Yes, thank you, appreciate it.
We'll, we'll be in touch as soon as it's appropriate.
Okay, excellent, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Now, Bill, did you have anything else?
No, that was all I have. Do you have anything for me?
I.
Am I glad to be back?
I'm just glad to see you back.
Thank you.
Okay. County assessor Jeff Coleman.
Hello, good afternoon. Just come today, I'll be brief as I was in. December ninth and December tenth, from noon to four, I would like to close the county assessor's office to the public. I would like to have my staff do some training on our new standards and protocols for the, the way we document our reassessment and, and, and redefining our physical descriptions of, of structures. There's a lot of work. I've tried doing this during work hours and we're not getting much done, so. I would like to close that office again on December ninth and December tenth, in the afternoons.
From twelve to four?
From twelve to four.
That'd be, that's a Thursday and Friday, isn't it?
That's correct.
I know you, you've had to do this before on a couple of other occasions.
Yes, yeah. We're a pretty busy office, it's hard to get a break and, and, you know, we're to have any discussions as a group, so.
Okay, we've got a motion by Dale Second by Tracy to approve the closure to the public, to the county assessor's office on December nine and ten, from twelve noon until four PM for training purposes. Any further question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Three ayes, Jane.
That's all I got.
Can we all come out and join your class?
Absolutely, be prepared for your brain ticks a little bit, yes.
You might, you might need a couple of extra days if we were in there.
You never know. All right, thank you, I appreciate it.
Clerk Lisa Witt is here and she has a proposal on some new poll pads. I've read about your poll pads here recently.
Yeah, the Secretary of State's office earlier in the year sent out an email. They wanted to purchase them for counties. There were nineteen counties in Indiana that had not went to poll pads yet. Because what we do, when election time comes, we print the books and the book, the books that are signed, and we put them together, but they're wanting to go to an electronic, electronic poll pads, which would work really well. It, it's going to save a lot of time because we're going to plug those things in, it's going to upload to the system rather than us having to go in and enter that you voted. It's going to show right, right there. It, it just make, it's going to make things easier for poll workers. Things can be updated there. I think they're eventually going to force us, especially since there's only nineteen counties that have held out and said, we just can't afford it. Fayette County, if we were to buy them, it would cost us almost seventy-one thousand dollars. So they are proposing that they purchase them for those nineteen counties and it costs us nothing.
Yeah, there's, there's no upfront cost on this, but there is, there is a.
Maintenance later, I mean, we'll have to, we'll have to keep our programs, you know, we'll have to keep them, but nothing, yeah.
Do they have to be programmed on an annual basis?
I don't think he told us that they had to be programmed on an annual basis.
From my understanding, how Rush Counties work when they do the, the, the annual vote, it looks like it connects to the state's website.
Yeah.
So I don't think it actually does any kind of local.
Update.
Update or anything like that. But even if it does, I think it would be cheaper than the fact that Lisa has to spend hours and hours copying poll books now, plus the paper, plus the binders, plus the labor and all the stuff that goes along the main channel.
Because originally, before I took office, we were paid, we would run our copies and then we were paying runsmen to bind those books. We'd keep them for two years and then we would pitch them. And so when I took office, I said, why are we paying for binders when we can just buy a binder, put them in there and reuse, you know. And so we zip tie them right now together and keep them the two years. But this is just going to be less paperwork and, and they're going to push us to come that way anyway. So we can jump on board now and let them pay for it, or we can wait and we can pay for it.
Yeah.
I, I mean, that's the reality of it.
Yeah, I, I understand, well, let's.
And we met with two companies, Michael and I met with two companies that they had proposed. Noe covers the majority of the state. The counties around us are using them, they really seem to like them, you know, so.
Well, I mean, first I want to make sure I'm correct in my thinking here and, and let's draw a mental picture for everyone that listens at home to these meetings. What this means is when, when you go vote, if we have these poll pads, when you go vote, you're, you're used to walking in and the very first person you see has a printed list of all the voters in your precinct. And they ask you your name and address and they check your name off on the printed list. And then you sign your name and you go on down the line. So with the poll pads, what you're going to see is something like a.
Like an iPad screen.
Like an iPad screen with all this pre-programmed into the memory of this little electronic pad.
Yes.
Now, from there, is there, is there a place for the voter to actually sign their name?
The, the way it works, just having done it in Rush County, is the iPad's facing, on a little stand facing the worker. I'd hand, you'd hand me the ID, I'd verify that it's you, I load up your information and go, yep, that's the information.
Flip it over.
Yeah, the thing swivels, you sign, I swivel it back and then it prints off the label and that's it. I mean, it's faster, there's no books that have to be printed off. We don't have to worry about the precincts as much because we can, it's all preloaded.
It's all there, so when you go, like, if you go to vote and, and Tracy go in there and you would normally vote at Glenwood, it's, if, if you were to show up here in, at the courthouse, then we're going to be like, no. it's, if, if you were to show up here in, at the courthouse, then we're gonna be like, "No." Instead of calling the clerk's office now, like you would have to, and we're gonna be able to tell you, "You need to go to Glenwood."
That's awesome.
Yeah.
Especially for people living around.
Right there, yeah. That information is right there.
So instead of it not being in a book, we're having to find out where you are and that kind of thing, it's at least able to look it up and give direction and have that information there, it looks up. Or if we decide to do poll centers...
Which I think they're eventually gonna push to as well.
Yeah. It, it would, it also speeds it up.
It's gonna speed up, and if we were to go to, if we were to go to the vote centers, so let's say that you voted here, and then you decided, "Oh, I think I'm gonna go try to vote somewhere else." It's gonna say, "No, Tracy already voted. She doesn't get a vote a second time."
That's good.
Yeah.
Just like at real time.
Yes.
That sounds good.
Without the voting machine ever hooking to the internet, because our voting machines do not hook to the internet at all.
Yeah, this is just poll pad.
This is just the poll pad. It's not gonna get anybody anywhere, 'cause I know there's people who are saying, "We don't wanna be hacked. We can't be hacked." Our voting machines cannot be hacked.
Voting machines are still air gap. This is just the
This is just the...
The voter list that this means by the state goes, "Yep, you're registered to vote," same as the, the other record, so.
Okay, that was gonna be part of my next question.
Yeah, you're still, you're still not hooking to the internet without machine. What you put in there is what your vote is going to be when you cast it.
Yeah, but what about the actual poll pad? Is it connected to the internet in any way? Either through your office?
It, it is connected to the internet when it's being used. However, it is an encrypted connection, and it's only to the state website.
Yes, that's the only thing.
Only to the state's website?
The state's database.
Which is where your information is being pulled from that says you're eligible to vote.
Yeah.
Okay. Does anyone see any security risks in this system?
I can't.
No more so than, than where we have it now.
Yeah.
I mean, it's the same, same system that, that we're using now, when they get logged in on the computer through the firewall and the encrypted systems to get to the voter registration, when, when somebody goes upstairs to register a vote, or those systems, so.
And I think they've prepared for this, because, I mean, we put in FireEye.
Yeah, we're still using FireEye.
Which is, was something that they wanted for us to start using, so I think that they've done their work. And this actually started under Secretary Lawson, and then she retired due to her health, and so Secretary Solomon's office just, just carried it out.
So the, the same source that you use today to compile your
That I make those books with.
Your printed voter list is the same source that you would use with the pad?
Yes, yes.
To download those lists?
Yeah, and there was lots of concern, I mean, especially in the last election, that what if someone, they, like, the Secretary of State's office actually printed us extra poll books, because what if someone came in and grabbed a poll book and ran? So that we would have something to back up, whereas with this, we're not gonna have to worry about that.
I never heard of that happening, but in, in today's world...
In this crazy world. I mean, let's be real, somebody might want my poll book.
You, you just gave somebody an idea that hadn't thought about, I guess.
Well, I would hope that they don't.
Okay, so, uh... Going forward, the, the, the annual maintenance fee is, uh... Do I understand this right? A hundred and fifty dollars?
That's what we were told, yes.
For device? And we would have, what, twenty-eight of them?
Yes.
Hey, whatever.
Did he?
I have no idea what the number was.
It was a hundred and fifty dollars. We have twenty-eight precincts.
I thought it was like thirteen.
But I think, yeah, I think we're at fifteen, because we're gonna put two at each polling location, and we have multiple combined precincts. You know what I'm saying? So like, at the Miller Building, I don't know whether we got it there, but... Like, okay, so like, on Harrisburg, I think we have H seven and H eight. There would only be two poll books there. Two of the, the computers.
Yeah.
There.
Okay. The, uh... One more question, and I'll hush up.
Okay.
The, the ongoing maintenance fees for this, do you plan to pay for that out of, uh... Where do you plan to pay for that out of? Or do you have a plan yet?
We're, we're gonna have to figure, I mean, ultimately, we're going to have to do this.
Yeah.
It's gonna come out of the election budget.
That, that was where I was going.
Yeah, it's gonna come out of the election budget.
Would, would the election board's budget need to be, reflect that cost going forward?
Not for this coming year, it wouldn't. But yes, in the future, when we're doing that, we're gonna want to make sure that we have it.
So that's a matter that, that would have to be taken care of, and when, when you submit a budget for 2023, that would have to be in the
Yes.
Budget for the election board?
Yeah.
Okay.
Assuming the state doesn't pony up the dough for continuing years?
Yeah, which we would really like for them to do.
Yeah.
But, I mean, we could've jumped on board when they were saying, "You gotta do this, you gotta do this," and we could've bought them right then, but we held out, just because there were only nineteen of us. They're eventually gonna, they won it bad enough.
Well, I, I, I would hope that we wouldn't have any problems with it the way we did with the Odyssey program when they rolled it out, you know?
There's not. There's other clerks who are already using this. I mean, they're already using it, so it's not like it's something that's new.
The, the pads that we're, that we're looking at are the same ones they've been using in Rushville for years.
Yeah.
And I've voted over there for years and not had any problems.
Franklin County uses them. I, I believe they're used in Newcastle. So they've, they've been around a while. We just haven't bought them yet, because we couldn't afford them.
Okay. Well, I wasn't meaning to give you a hard time. I wanna get this information out front, so that people can understand what we're, what we're doing with this, because some people are gonna be really surprised when they go vote next spring to see these things instead of what they're used to.
But you might be surprised, 'cause people are saying, "Down here, why don't we have those computers that they're using in Indianapolis and Marion County?"
Yeah.
Because we can't afford them. We cannot afford the initial investment.
I know. People are getting more used to this, I think, and go get plugged in.
I went to
You have to fill out on a
I went to Shelby County, um, two years ago, when they first kinda started talking about it, and, um, I said, "How do your poll workers feel about it?" Well, they bring me this lady, and she's ninety-eight, and she said, "I love it. The best thing ever." She said it made her job easier. She felt more secure as a voter. So, I mean, 'cause it's gonna pull your ID up, and if you go in there and you say that you're me, they're gonna be like, "No."
Okay. I don't have any more questions. How about you two? Do you have any questions on this?
One, you, you made a comment that there were like thirteen or fourteen of these that you can get.
They're gonna give us fifteen.
But you said it like
That's all we need. We have twenty-eight precincts, but all we, I mean, we only put two poll books. You know what I mean? At each location. We don't need more books. Or pads than we even have books.
Okay, so basically, you have one of these per...
Yeah, you're just doing a train.
Yeah.
Have that book or a poll pad, and it's gonna move quicker. I mean, 'cause no more, there's not gonna be any more, "Oh, well, let me look and see if Dale Munson's on here." It's gonna type Dale Munson in, it's gonna pull him up.
That's good.
Yeah.
So you want me to make a motion? I'll make a motion.
And I, and I will tell you, I mean, the first guy that, that Michael and I met with begged us to be their guinea pig. So we, we, he's, he said, "We have a great system," and I was like, "Well, how many counties are you in?" And he was like, "Well, actually, you would be our first." No. So, see, I, I was on to the Odyssey thing.
Yeah. Nobody wants to be
Nobody wants to be first.
No.
Especially not after last election.
Right.
Well, I'll make a motion that we move to agree to Lisa's proposal here for a purchase agreement between the Indiana Secretary of State and Election Division, and No Wink, and Fayette County.
Okay, well, a motion by Tracy, second by Dale, to approve the purchase agreement between the Indiana Secretary of State, the Indiana Election Division, No Wink, and Fayette County for the purchase of poll pads.
Awesome. Thank you.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Three, three ayes, Jane.
Thank you.
So... Okay. IT Department, Michael King. Michael, do you have anything for us today?
Had a quote for computers from four different vendors, actually. The best price came in from Dell. I was getting twelve computers at seven-hundred-and-eighty-one dollars each. Comparable prices were nine-twenty-nine, right around nine-fifty, and eight-two-one. So Dell came in with the best price. Actually have the, have it in my budget right now. I don't necessarily need them right now, but I'm trying to get into that five-year cycle that we talked about years ago. So I wanna get them really there for next year. But with the chip shortages being as they are, it's possible that if I, even if I order them right now, I may not get them till next year with the way shipping is right now for computers. One of the vendors actually even says on his quote, "Stocks are here. Dell's anticipating two to four months for delivery." So if I order them right now and their stock is gone, I may not see those computers for like two to four months from now. So we'll see how things go. But like I said, we're trying to stay in that five-year cycle or so to replace the computers, instead of letting them get too old. But I've got the money in my budget for this year, and this'll keep the, keep the, uh, the funds used. So I just wanna get that approved.
Yeah, I, I remember your, your five-year cycle, when you started that.
Yeah, we could maybe let them go six, with the way things are right now, where we're at, but I'd, probably a better idea is not to let them get too old with the way software's going and the way the hardware's going right now, but, uh, we'll see how things go.
Okay, so your best deal is from Dell?
Yeah.
Seven-hundred-and-eighty-one dollars each?
Yeah.
Commissioners, do you have a preference on this?
I'm gonna approve the seven-eighty-one, twelve, Dell laptop.
Okay, well, a motion by Dale, second by Tracy, to accept the, the quote from Dell Technologies for twelve computers at seven-hundred-and-eighty-one dollars each, total of nine-thousand-three-hundred-seventy-two dollars.
I'll get that processed. Though it also comes with a
Further questions? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Three ayes.
And it also comes with a three-year warranty on those, so that's advantageous compared to some of the other brands right now, so.
Three-year warranty.
So, um, anything else for you at the moment?
You give us time, we'll think of something. You probably oughta get out the door while you can.
Thank you all.
Thanks, Michael. Emergency Management Department, Adrian Ellis is here to discuss the federal mitigation plan, incident command system monitoring, and Homeland Security grants.
Hello, my new boss, hello.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you. It's been very busy and had a very interesting conversation. Because of mitigation plan, I've been doing a lot of traveling. They have added Union County, Wayne County, Franklin County, and Rush County into the plans, because we're associated with them. Mitigation plans can extend, and you can have cooperation, so my meetings are taking place with them. One of our stipulations is, I'm working with Indiana University Pollist Center, and they basically have said to me, "Document anyone you talk to about this." And while I'm doing this, if I could get you all, anyone here to sign this, there's no responsibility for anything, just that you've heard about it, your name, if you wanna put an organization as residence. But this is, uh, in addition, we want to look at down the road. What Lisa was talking about, as far as cost, after assuming this plan's gonna be approved by the federal government, she can probably pay for it out of that. And other things that we can do. The mitigation plan, I'll get to in a minute, but if you look the four phases of Homeland Security, it's mitigation, preparedness, response, and recovery. Mitigation basically is everything you can do to minimize the damage or eliminate it. If you have a house and a tree that is seventy feet away, and the tree is eighty feet tall, you either cut ten feet off or cut the tree down. You don't wait till it falls, and that's what the mitigation is all about, but the Safety Committee is starting to combine with, um, civil rights. I had a long conversation with Department of Justice, and it's kind of a hybrid, and they're interesting, interested in seeing my, uh, plan. The emergency response plan I wrote for the county is going to expand to what we give OSHA. I'm going to include elements of the EEOC. The civil rights plan, along with the courthouse procedures that address the OSHA needs, that will put us ahead. And things we need to look at. Dale, we talked about the training for the employees. I think I found some money that would pay for that, and in fact, I received two award letters from Homeland Security, one for my salary. The other one is a, a grant to do those kind of things. It's sixty-five-hundred. The, uh... The issues we're looking at are how to keep everybody safe, and one thing that we're lacking is training. And that's, you know, you and I talked about that, so that's something going along. On a financial rate, recovered eighteen-thousand-fifty from a 2019 grant that, uh, somewhere got lost because of the lack of signature. We got that. My 2020 reimbursement, all the qualifications are made. You should be getting an email to sign for that. I would assume that that will be coming soon. Simply electronic signature that finalized that, and the county will get another eighteen thousand dollars. Received a grant for thirty-three thousand for the law enforcement, along with the sixty-five-hundred, and I just, uh, got the award letter saying I qualified, met all the requirements for the 2021. Now, that grant won't be finalized until next year, but all in total, it looks like, you know, broadly, closer to a hundred thousand dollars for the year. So I'm happy with that. The, um, the other issue is a mandatory requirement by all the emergency services, which is a NINs. That is a federal requirement that was outlined in Homeland Security Presidential Directive Five. It's also a state statute and a county ordinance. Twenty-fifteen, when Mike Pence was governor, they started pushing people who were not submitting. And out of that, two things that I know have happened. One, funding was denied to county, and two, money had to be returned, because they didn't. The training is mandatory, but anybody that's ever been into it, like I have, and my particular case, I serve on Task Force Six. Task Force Six has been to every hurricane, from Katrina to Sandy. And when you're out there doing that, whether we're in another state or training with other counties, incident command is a language that everybody uses, so you don't have to get it. Now, there are case studies included with what I do, or when I reference that.
Thank you, sir.
There's a penalty and there's danger and there are lawsuits against those who don't do it. Buxton versus United States of America resulted from a wildfire in Iowa. Two firemen were killed. Uh, there's even a tribute to them on YouTube. And then a two thousand seventeen, I think, fire in South Carolina, nine firemen were killed. OSHA sued them and they won twenty-seven million dollars because they didn't use incident command. The incident command system and the communications plan are critical. I'm working on a communication plan and an interoperability plan for the city and the county. Once those are done along with the mitigation plan, that opens up a great big door to get money. If we have, um, major disaster, that's a doorway. You have to have it to get that. The last, uh, time we utilized that, I was able to get over two hundred thousand dollars. We don't want to ever be on the other side of that because not having it and not being able to deal with it, with the problem, is one thing that is going to be deadly to us and we can't have that. Like OSHA, I'm staying ahead of them. I want to ask them a question rather than them ask us. That's not going to happen. I did discuss with the Director of Homeland Security what I think is an inequality. That the, uh, EMA directors are held to a higher standard than everybody else. We are tested, evaluated, and judged and nobody else is. All the things we do. Meeting that evaluation is another job. It involves education, training, plans. I spend probably two weeks a year at Camp Atterbury in Muscat, it's a urban training. I don't understand it. I told him that and I just got a blank there. I don't think anyone ever brought that up to him, you know? Not there to insult him, I'm not there to do anything to say, "Look, you've got ninety-two people out here who are doing things in their own county that nobody else is required to do in that role." So I'm not trying to be mean to them, but the submission for the NIMs training log of each department is due the twenty, due the thirtieth. I rolled it up on the twenty-ninth and sent it in. Last year, only one department other than mine submitted theirs. That's disgusting. That's got to change. If they don't, it's going to come back on there. There is a, an understanding of NIMs in there along with what's going on with mitigation plan. Jane, I'll give you my call. The issue with, um, the mitigation plan, uh, the front cover is somewhat an outline of what it does, but one of our biggest problems around here is flooding. And roadway, bridges, um, it's an opportunity to look down the road at major flooding and fix those things. Fifty, what is it, fifty east down by Nontown where the bank is slowly eroding, that is something that can be addressed. Four forty north, uh, all the way up to Pennville, you know, what can we do about that? Jerry Goldman told me many years ago that that problem was created by somebody doing something with the river up there. And if it can be undone, that's something mitigation plan could be used for, rerouting. We have to have this plan in place. It also looks at, uh, what we can do around the courthouse, what City Hall can do, what we can do to the streets to make it safer. There are a multitude of things that these plans have to be there. There will be tons of meetings, but I've already had one with the hospital. I'll be meeting with the school board, City Hall, City Council, Board of Works, you again, uh, County Council, and I will be, be building a team. And I'm going to pay bill back for him following me in his stuff this morning, uh, or earlier. Going to get him on that team, his buddy over here. Get down to his office and get them. It is something that gets as many voices as possible. I would imagine we're done, that team will probably be pretty strong. It will include businesses, banks, industry, medical, health, street department, and more. It will give us, and Jay, I don't want to leave you, yeah, buddy, can't leave you. It will be an opportunity for us to look at what we need and that could come down to equipment. And there's a lot of things that, um, they expect a lot of people to do, but they don't give them the tools to do it, so. And then the legality, we'll meet him in there. So that basically is a long list and I've got to be quite honest, uh, I'm covered up right now. I have a deficiency that I get into what I'm doing and I have no problem waking up, sitting six or seven o'clock in the evening and I didn't even notice the time. I love the fact that you're actually helping someone and you're doing something positive. And as time goes on, uh, we'll see the benefit. We, in so many ways, we already have. There are steps to take. I had my kickoff meeting with I do. They have a longer list of things for me to do. There will be three public meetings that we have to, uh, have plus probably, oh my God, I can't even begin to tell you how many other meetings are going to go on, but there are going to be a lot of them because I want to get info from everybody. The bottom line is December next year is it for me, and I want to leave knowing I've done the best I can. Done as much as I can. I don't want to open a lot of doors for funding to come into the county and get a lot of things done. So basically, that's what's going on. I will be adding SOPs to the county plans, emergency plans, and that will include, uh, training on an annual basis. And that, if that's it, is how we stay ahead of, uh, OSHA, uh, State and everybody else. I'm open to any questions about that or opinion, but I want to sit down and have a long conversation about it. I'm more than happy. But, uh, basically, that's it.
Adrian.
Yes.
How long do you think it'll take you to get all this together?
The mitigation plan, we're looking at November next year.
November twenty-twenty-two?
Yes, it's a long plan, long process, and December is it for me.
Okay, well, it sounds like you've got your work set out for you.
I do. Um, I hate to admit it, but I kind of thrive on hard work. I get into it and get lost. Uh, I just, I love it. And I want to do the best I can for the county.
Well, thank you for the update on all this.
You're very welcome.
Does anyone else have any questions for Adrian on, on this? Quite a bit here to absorb.
Well, I hate to say, but that's about a fifth of it.
Yeah.
There, there's a lot going on.
Any questions for Adrian? Well, thank you for the report, Adrian.
My pleasure.
Um, if there's anything you need from us, just let us know. And good luck on your project. I know that's going to take a long time.
Yeah, you could have warned me about asking you for an additional. If the county learned to ask for more. I didn't expect them to say yes. I learned.
Yeah.
You know, Connersville and Fayette County, I think, as my father always drilled into me, a problem is an opportunity for a solution in a better way. With the economics going on right now, you know, we all need to look at different ways of going about things. Farming, I noticed something this summer I've never seen before in Fayette County, a different kind of crop. Somebody on four fifty, maybe, growing peppers. Never seen that before. I thought that was pretty cool. And then I read, uh, a company, uh, McCormick that makes a lot of spices, they're dying. They have shut down so much because they can't get the, uh, materials they need for spices, and I think that opens up a lot of doors for farmers. I think, I hate seeing farmers have to deal with the middleman. I wish to God there was a way we could get the middleman out of the way and a farmer could be a productive from here to there without somebody getting in the way and taking extra bucks and that. When I leave the county, I'm going to do a lot for the community and like the armed forces weekend and all like that. I think we can build things and, uh, sometime I'll sit down and show you the PowerPoint on that. Uh, Phase Four, we'll put a smile on your face. Phase Five, we'll have you laughing because Phase Five creates about two hundred permanent jobs, so it's on.
Okay.
All right.
I'm looking forward to it.
Jay, well, thank you all.
Thank you, Adrian. County Highway Department, Jay, do you have anything for us today?
I don't really have anything unless you've got some questions for us.
Got what?
If, unless you've got some questions for us, I'll send them.
Uh, well, I'll say you've done a good job keeping the snow off the roads so far. Appreciate that. Either one of you have anything for Jay?
Nope, already asked him.
Okay, um, Bill Mackey, do you have anything for us today?
Yes, uh, contract for, uh, bu, for the Pacer, for Butler Fairman to do next year, um, his work for the pavement asset. That we, they've done it ever since inception, six or seven years ago, and that's the amount for next year's.
Yeah.
If we don't do that, we can't apply for community crossings and that and that, so.
Yeah, we, we don't want to do that, yeah.
So I think it just requires your signature, Dale.
Yeah.
I don't know what the, last year's dollar, well, it varies because they do more work one year than others. Because one year they usually just update, you know, previous and then they have to go out and grade all the roads again next year, so I'm not sure. Next year's probably going to have to go out and, because it's a scale from one to ten, county road. And the worse, the lower they are, the worse they are, and that's those are the ones you want to try to have, going across these money or helps Jay out in terms of what he wants to do also.
Yeah.
You know, ship and see, you know, pay.
Do you know if the roads, or do you know if the roads were graded this year or not?
I thought, I think this might have been another big year. I think next year, well, they, they grade them, they always grade them down. You know, they'll, they'll grade them, but I think next year is when they physically go out and look at them again. They physically do it every two years.
Yeah.
And then they'll downgrade them usually a point or whatever, like off years, and then they add what Jay's done. Ship and see on that, keeps it all updated.
That, that'll update our maps and everything else.
Yeah, so next year we plan on, you know, you got a better idea of what you want to do, community crossings.
Where does that money come from?
Oh, you guys paid for it. Oh, this came out of Jay's, because a lot of them, I'm not sure, like, community crossing stuff comes out of, whatever, I'm not sure. Dale's going to write you.
I think I paid out of V H.
Yeah. I think a lot of it comes out of.
From V H finances. Okay. How about a motion?
I'll make a motion that we accept this agreement.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion by Tracy, second by Dale to, uh, approve the, uh, general engineering services agreement for the pavement inventory and analysis for Fayette County between Fayette County and Butler Fairman and C. Now, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Three ayes, Jane. I'll go ahead and sign that for you right now, Bill.
I'll, I'll be here.
And today is the sixteenth, right?
Yes.
There you go, sir.
There, sir. That's all I got.
Okay. Uh, see no council representative here today. Uh, mail, did, either one of you have any mail to share? Neither do I. Okay, under old business, uh, we talked about this briefly at our last meeting, this, um, this contract that is up for renewal for between us, or actually between the jail and, and Rumke for, uh, trash pickup over there. Do you remember some of this? I guess it's okay for us to go ahead and, uh, approve renewal of that thing. It was four seventy-five eighty-three. I think that's quarterly. I'll do it right. Here's the cover letter that came with it.
I'm going to accept the contract with Rumke.
We've got a motion by Dale, second by Tracy to approve the, uh, the trash pickup, uh, contract between Fayette County Sheriff's Department and Rumke Waste and Recycling Services. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Three ayes, Jane. We need to all make sure this gets to the proper place. Okay, under new bit, uh, you, do you have anything, anything else under old business? Okay, under new business, um, we should have a couple of quotes here for, um, tree removal for the, uh, Fayette County Cemetery Commission. They did go out and get two quotes, one for nineteen hundred and one for eighteen hundred. Uh, the one for eighteen hundred is from Cox Tree Service. The other, Arbor Cut. And Dale, you very keenly noticed, they both have the same address. I, I have no, I have no explanation for that whatsoever, but there is a hundred dollars difference between the quotes.
Looks like the wife underkilled the husband.
And just to let everyone know, this is for removal of some, some dead and dangerous trees in the Robeson Chapel Cemetery. And, uh, this is a job big enough that they, uh, our Cemetery Commission members just can't do it themselves. And they do have the money in their budget to pay for it.
I guess I got one question again. This is an invoice.
Yeah, it says invoice, but it's, it's sp, it's actually supposed to be a quote. The work hasn't been done.
Has it, uh, shows it past due. Yeah, they got dates on here, so it is interesting.
Well, I, I got no, I got no explanation for that either.
Or we could go with this quote that's from ten twenty-two and is a hundred dollars less.
Yeah.
It's later date on it.
Well, we don't, uh, they, they sent these to me and I forwarded them on to you and I, I made these copies and I've, uh, no, nobody here from the Cemetery Commission to explain that.
They can do what they, really we're just approving them to do, choose what they want if they have it in their budget, right?
Yeah.
Is that how that works?
Please accept Cox Tree Service.
I'll second that.
Yeah, motion by Dale, second by Tracy to accept the, uh, quote from Cox Tree Service for eighteen hundred dollars for the removal of trees in Robeson Chapel Cemetery. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Three ayes, Jane. Also, we have a quarterly, plan here from the Fayette County Public Transit for eighty-eight thousand seventy-nine dollars for the public transit system over at the Senior Center.
And this is the, my understanding of this is the, is this the grant money?
Yes.
So they normally give us paperwork with that for financial, the financial paperwork? Do we normally get that and they just failed to do it this time?
Normally, that's all I ever see. I, Joe Lisa sends it over because she's the grant administrator. And, um, if I needed anything more than that, I would have to ask Joe Lisa for it.
So we normally just sign? Is that what we typically do with these? Okay.
Yeah.
And that money is in what budget? Transit.
Yeah, that's Jane can, well, Joe Lisa could explain it better than anybody, I guess, but Jane deals with it on a regular basis. Does any of that pass through, does it pass through, um, your ledgers here or the ledgers over at the Senior Center?
It will pass through our own ledgers, but it's just a passover.
Yeah, okay.
Like, once we submit that claim, we will get that money and then we'll write a check to Transit for that.
These, these grants get a little bit complicated.
Yeah, they have some strings attached. We just have to be sure we're following the guidelines. So that's a communication maybe that needs to be. I mean, based on my own understanding of what's been communicated to me, I'll, I'll deal on more research and make sure, talk with some people. Like Joe Lisa, make sure we're doing things the way it's written to be done. Accountability, I know, is with the Senior Citizens Director there to be providing that financial paperwork along with that. So maybe, maybe it's Joe Lisa that keeps it. That could be, she knows that she has it in hand and that could be the way this is going. So I just wanna, we'll make sure of that.
Yeah, well, Joe Lisa is, is the place to go for any additional information on that for sure. And I've got a high level of confidence and credibility to make sure everything's right.
I'll move to approve the claim for the public transit.
I'll second that.
Yeah, a motion by Dale, second by Tracy to approve the, uh, Fayette County Public Transit quarterly claim for eighty-eight thousand seventy-nine dollars. Any further question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Three ayes, Jane. Now, is this the copy that has to go back to Lisa and needs one signature? Where do you want?
Leave her on the left-hand side. No, I'm sorry, you're on the right-hand side.
I'm not the project engineer.
On the right-hand side. From over there, I can tell. Yeah, right here, personal signature. And she's already filled in, like, as you're the president and signed another half commissioners.
Okay, I'll sign that right now and hand it right back to you.
I'll start putting the sign here, stick your stuff.
There you go. Okay. Um, next we have an engagement letter with Peterson Consulting for capital assets records. And Jane, I know that you are involved in this. Would you like to speak to this matter?
Um, yes, one of the state orders of accounts has passed some new regulations and one of it is enhanced regulatory controls. So beginning with this year, when we do, um, our annual financial report, we have to depreciate our assets. And so basically, this company has been highly recommended by other auditors in other counties that have already had their work done. That they'll, you know, go back and get historical costs for all of our assets and then set up the, the charts and get the depreciation schedules ready. And after this year, it should be something that we can maintain ourselves because after the first year, all we'd have to do is add on any new assets or take off any assets that we remove in a year. But for the first year, it's a more daunting task than I want to tackle.
So this agreement is, um, specifically for your office, correct?
No, it is specifically for the commissioners.
Well. Okay, we're, I think we're just an extension of your office.
There you go.
How do they get paid?
We'll be coming at your contractual services line.
There's enough in there to fix that.
Yes.
Do you recommend this company?
I do, yes. There were, there were a couple of others that I reached out to. Um, one did not even respond, but like I said, this, this company particularly, several other counties had used them. Because I'm not the only county in the vote right now trying to scramble and get somebody hired before the end of the year to do this. And it was discussed at an auditor's conference in October. So I think I've talked to him a few times already because he kind of gave me an initial, here's what all I would need from you to get started list. Uh, I think it seems like a very nice job.
And this will cost us sixty-five hundred dollars.
That's good. It's a good investment for us to get things like after this year or two would be, like Jane said, we'll know it started out right or best, I guess, with someone else going through that task.
Now, hopefully so.
Yeah.
I'll move to accept the agreement between Peterson Consulting for capital assets records.
And I'll second that.
A motion by Dale, second by Tracy to accept the, uh, contract agreement, um, with Peterson Consulting Services Incorporated. Any further question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Three ayes, Jane. Now, you have, you need a signature somewhere on that, don't you? Okay, requiring only one.
All I need to do.
There you go. Okay. Now, we've got a matter that we should take care of before the end of the year, our holiday schedule for 2022. And I think you all get a copy of the
I do, I have one.
These, what the state is doing and what the city is doing. I think let's kind of put this to the forefront is because of the way um, the calendar falls this year. There's, uh, we could either use, uh, December thirty-first as a holiday or move that day to somewhere else in 2022. Jane, you, you talked to the other offices on all this stuff. Do you will bring, do you need to bring more clarity to this situation?
No, but the, the only thing that, I, I had that one office, um, it's been about six weeks ago, contact me and I gave them what I assumed would be your holiday schedule. And, and I was doing what the state is doing, taking the New Year's Day, um, because of how it falls, if a holiday falls on a Saturday, then our handbook says we will recognize the holiday on a Friday. So I put December thirty-first. Well, one of the offices questioned that because then that would be giving us another holiday this year. And so that's kind of what started. So then I asked the city, well, you know, how are you guys going to handle that? Because at that time, this state one was not available yet. The state hadn't published theirs. So I got then the copy of what the city's doing and they're just ignoring the New Year's holiday altogether. But they have added June 10th in there now, so the June twentieth holiday. So the city is still having the same number of holidays. They're just not having a New Year holiday this year. They're having June, June 10th instead. And then the state is taking the New Year's holiday on December thirty-first. So it's, I'm kind of up to whatever you guys, however you guys want to do it.
Well, if we, if we adopted the same holiday schedule that the state has, then we would use Friday, December the thirty-first of this year as a holiday and and, and just keep the same number of holidays as we always have on, on the remainder of, well, for 2022. So I guess it's just a matter of what, where we want to use it. Or we could do like the city's doing, add one in the middle of the year for next year. But then you'd have to be careful and, and drop that for 2023. So.
Or not.
You know, you, i- if you forget something like that, nobody's going to remind you of, I don't think. But, um, for, for my own purposes, I don't care, uh, which way we do it. But, um, if you use Friday, the December thirty-first and you've got all your, our, our holidays spent for this year and you can forget about it, um, you know? I know for you, every day is a holiday, so it don't make any difference, does it?
Well, not a holiday, right? It's a one day. I don't remember. I mean, does anyone have an opinion on that? Do you know?
Have you had any, uh, communication with any of the other offices in the building or do they have a preference?
Nobody has said the preference. I've had communication because a lot, I mean, like, as I was sitting here, somebody messaged me and said, what's the holiday schedule? I'm like, we haven't got that part of the agenda yet. So, I mean, everybody's anxious to know, but nobody's has said, other than, like you said, the one, one office did question um, if we put it on December thirty-first of this year. But, I mean, if the state is doing that, I don't see why we couldn't do it.
Yeah.
If that's what you wanted to do.
Actually, December thirty-first is New Year's Eve. And I'm, I don't anticipate this, you know, being very busy around here on that day. I'd say we'd be much busier in the middle of June than we would on December the thirty-first, put it that way.
Yeah, I didn't know, June 10th is a holiday. I didn't know that. What is it for?
That's, that's something we just came up with here recently. I think it's been observed in some other states, but not Indiana.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, I, I don't know. It doesn't matter to me. But I, I feel like it's good to, anytime we can, align ourselves more with what the state's doing might be a better choice for us.
In some cases.
In the state, the city too is important, so.
Yeah, well, that would give, let's see, if, if we, if you do use, uh, Friday, December thirty-first, then that would be a Friday, Saturday, and Sunday off. Everybody likes three-day weekends.
I guess they do take that, that June 10th is on a Monday, so they got the same three days. They worked in there and that. So anyway, it's three days. Next one, do you want a Friday off and a Monday off? Are you to choose? Well, I'd probably choose not to be here anyway. Okay, um, I don't know. Does it make it complicated for the city if we aren't around and they are? I mean, that's something I don't know yet or understand.
No, uh, we really, we've never had, uh, anything like that cause a problem before. You ever seen anything like that?
Not that I know of.
I don't care what we do. December thirty-first is okay, or, or you pick a, a date sometime in 2022. We could pick your birthday for all I care. I don't care.
Well.
It doesn't have to be June 10th. It could be.
We'll make our own calendar.
Yeah, it could be Dale's birthday.
That's pretty quick. You better not use mine.
Well, I guess, um, it would be a good thing, maybe this being in the heart of the winter too, or the beginning of bad weather and things, and people may have plans and they could go out of town for the special holiday. I would say it might be better for everyone if we did adopt the state's, um, holiday schedule. That would be my recommendation.
Okay, that would be for this year, we would use Friday, December thirty-first this year, and then the remainder of the list of of dates for, uh, uh, 2022. I don't care. So that's a pair of things.
Need a motion?
All right.
Bad motion?
Yes, I'll, I'll make that a motion, right.
Second.
Okay, we've got a, a motion by Tracy, second by Dale, to establish the, um, 2022 holiday schedule to match the list already provided that the state of Indiana has adopted. And that will include Friday, December thirty-first, 2021 for this year. Is there any further question or discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Three ayes, Jane. Now you can let them know what the holiday schedule is going to be. I don't think this applies to you, Jeff.
Unfortunately, it does not.
Okay. Or should I say it has nothing to do with you?
It has nothing to do with me.
Absolutely nothing to do with you.
Too bad we can't say the same for Jane.
Okay, well, that finally is the, uh, the end of our agenda unless we're forgetting something else. Are we forgetting anything? Of course, we've got claims yet to do, claims payroll. Is there anything else? Okay.
Is this just stuff that needs to be signed now?
It's easy for me to forget.
We'd approve claims and payroll.
I'll second that.
Yeah, we have a motion by Dale, second by Tracy to approve claims and payroll. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Three ayes. Okay. Okay. Let's see. Disagreement on the, uh... Cold pads. Only one signature required for that. That's all I can see.
Yeah, she had it marked, didn't she?
Well, this page is marked. And then back here, there's another page with no link, but with it marked.
Yes.
I think... These may not be in the same order as they came, if they were in with sheet orders. Two pages involved. That's it?
Oh, I second that.
We have a motion by Dale, second by Tracy to adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned. Thank you all very much.